This is the Commissioner meeting of July 24th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room, One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Schick?
Here.
Director Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
A moment of silence and salute to the flag. Tonight, I would like to take a moment of silence for Lou Dobbs, who recently passed. Lou was a wanted resident, an American conservative, political commentator, author, television host, and also a local farmer with the horses, and he did the horse show circuit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Four, public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL, oops, sorry, you read that part, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following, New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five, approval of agenda. There are three amendments to tonight's agenda. First, we have a proclamation we will be adding to tonight, recognizing the Sussex County Senior of the Year 2024, which will be presented at Senior Day at the fair on August 8th, 2024. Second, we have another proclamation that we will be presenting tonight, recognizing the hard work of the young ladies from the Weekend Bag Program. Lastly, we will be tabling to a future meeting, item number 14E. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as a matter?
Director, can you break up the two proclamations in 14E and do them at two different?
Yes, yes. I don't know if I can do that on the agenda.
You can.
I can. To approve the agenda for the two proclamations and then add or to delete the other?
That's up to your discretion.
Okay. So I will separate, and we will do the two proclamations. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with adding the two proclamations in it?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Schick and Commissioner Hayden, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Can we get a motion to table item 14E to a future meeting?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner Schick, any discussion?
I do have a discussion. I'd like to know why we're going to table this.
Well, when we had the agenda meeting, I specifically said that I would like to see the attorney come to the meeting, and I asked multiple times, and it hasn't happened. So I decided that I would like to see us take our 60 days.
So you want to take 60 days?
I don't want to take the full 60 days. We have three meetings, and if our clerk of the board could find a meeting that the attorney can come to, then I'll be more than happy to have it on the agenda.
So if we're going to table 14E, why aren't we going to table 14H?
I'm not going to table 14H.
Why is that? It's kind of the same platform, isn't it?
What's that?
Not going to table it?
No.
Okay.
So unless you want to separate it out and see if it goes through, that's fine.
Nope, just curious. I think there's people here in the audience that are wondering why we're going to table it, but okay.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, tabling item 14A?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden makes a motion and a second?
I think we had a second with DeGroot.
Oh, with DeGroot. Okay. Second.
Yeah.
And we had our discussion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, no.
Okay. Abstain? Motion carries. Number six, proclamations, certificates, presentations. We have the Weekend Bag Program to be presented by Commissioner Schick. Those here?
Proclamation, whereas the quality and character of life in the communities across Sussex County are reflective of the concerned and dedicated individuals, and whereas the Weekend Bag Program was first a concept established in 2016 by three sisters, Isabel, Olivia, and Magdalene, after Isabel realized there were students in her school who struggled with food and hygiene insecurity and wanted to help her peers. And whereas today, the Weekend Bag Program is a kid-founded and run 501(c)(3) nonprofit that runs for a full 10-month school year and works with the administration of local schools to identify students who would benefit most from receiving a weekend bag of hygiene products and food. And whereas today, the Weekend Bag Program has expanded to 21 schools and serving over 200 students each week during the school year, distributing over 160,000 meal items and over 38,000 weekend bags. And whereas Olivia and Magdalene have received multiple awards for their service to the community, including the 2022 Greater Newton Chamber of Commerce Community Service Award, the Daughters of the American Revolution 2024 and Community Service Award, the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce Healthy Living Award at their 37th Annual Awards Luncheon. And whereas Olivia and Magdalene and all who assist with the Weekend Bag Program are one of Sussex County's greatest assets, and that they are dedicated to help those in need unselfishly give their personal time to feed and make a difference in the lives of many children living in Sussex County. And whereas voluntary ones' time, talents, and resources have been an integral part of our American heritage since the early days of our nation, and it is essential that we continue this tradition of giving and sharing to preserve and improve the quality of life for all citizens in our county. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners commend Olivia, Magdalene, and Isabel and the Weekend Bag Program for their tremendous contribution to the Sussex County community. By order of the Sussex County Commissioners, thank you.
Do you folks want to say anything?
Say anything to the board?
We just want to say thank you. It's such an honor. We're so grateful.
We want to thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you, yeah. I've known your parents, I know what you guys do. You guys are doing a great thing. I really appreciate it.
Keep it going as long as you can. Thank you.
Just take a quick picture.
Oh, you blaming on the fan?
Number seven, there is no public hearing. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality and agenda topic for the record. And we get a motion to open the floor for public comment.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Hayden and a second with Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. The floor is open. Agenda topics only.
Director Space, members of the Board, thank you very much for your service to this county. I was here to honor, pardon, I'm sorry, Sparta, New Jersey. I was here with my fellow residents from Sparta to address Resolution 14E. I recognize and appreciate that the Board and Director has decided to adjourn the matter. It is a very sensitive and important matter to us. Does the Board have any sense of scheduling as to when that matter is going to be rescheduled?
We have a meeting August 21st, and then we have a meeting on the second Wednesday and the fourth Wednesday of September. I don't know those dates offhand. So one of those three meetings. And whenever the attorney from the wastewater management plan can come, then we'll schedule that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood, Director. You're looking for the attorney from, for the developer?
Yes, yes. No, from the PAC to come.
Oh, from the PAC.
Yes, yes. So then we'll have your address at that.
Understood. Okay. We appreciate the Board's consideration. Please do keep in mind it's a sensitive issue for Sparta and important matter. We look forward to seeing you in September.
That's why I felt it was, it could be August, depending on the availability. That's why I felt it was important that he was here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Agenda topics only. Close the floor for public comment. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Schick and a second with Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Motion carries. Number nine, Commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Hayden.
So I didn't get to do my weekly, my weekly library. My only comment tonight is about the diamond chip. I'm a hard no on that. I think it'll bring too much traffic. I think it'll drop property values. DOT doesn't know how to handle that traffic there. And 80% of the people in that town don't want it, as far as I know. And if they don't want it, they're my constituents. If 80% of them don't want it, I'm in line with you guys. So you know you have my vote. Hopefully, we can prevail and not let some big donors win the day.
Is that it?
That's it.
Commissioner Schick?
Thank you. So I attended Jenny's House Board meeting this last Wednesday, and they were granted $135,000 to their program to continue their fine work. They're working on a reaccreditation, which is done every five years, and they're very close to getting that finished. And you know, Jenny's House is instrumental in the education and the bringing awareness to, you know, child assaults, child abuse, that kind of stuff. You know, so they do tremendous work. There's a lot that I'm not allowed to say because, you know, it's in confidence, but let me tell you, what they do is amazing. It's just absolutely amazing. Secondly, I attended the Board of Trustees meeting at the college last night. For the second year post-COVID, they have had an increase in revenue. They have an increase in what they call credits, college credits that have been paid for, and they're already ahead of schedule with fall enrollment for the 2025 year. So they are really knocking it out of the park over there. So the improvements that we've discussed are in their final planning stages, and we should see a shovel in the ground really soon.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yeah. To start, I attended the Agricultural Development Board last week. We do have some progress for the farmland preservation, as the Ag Development Board has appointed a subcommittee to update our farmland preservation plan, which is terrific news, as it will give us direction of where we want to go, you know, preserving Sussex County. Two members of the Ag Development Board, in collaboration with myself and the county engineer, Bill, will work with a consultant third party on this. I'll provide updates as, you know, time goes on. Additionally, I have an update on my work with SCCC and Hudson Farms. We finalized the weekly activities for the student internship program. Each week, one student for the majority of the semester will participate in the following activities, at Hudson Farms Greenhouse, seeding and the different media material for starting plants, fertilizer formulations, seedling treatments, transplanting, leafy green, pest management and disease monitoring, tomato pollination, harvesting and care, tropical plant growth and propagation, and data collection for yielding and packaging sales. These activities align with the course we're taught at SCC's agricultural programs, providing their students with real-world experience to enhance their workforce readiness or support their advancements at a four-year institution. Currently, we have one student lined up for this fall 2024 internship program and fall semester, and one, another interested student for the spring 2025 semester. I want to thank John at Hudson Farms for his collaboration with myself and officials at SCC to help better students here in Sussex County. Regarding the Tri-County Agritourism Initiative for County Route 519, we did hold our second meeting. This meeting solidified our initiative and included a staff member from the Highlands Council, which was happy to hear of our regional initiative to promote agribusinesses as well as farms and display our rural heritage in the northwest, you know, precious corner here we got in New Jersey. During the meeting, we assigned tasks to advance our efforts. On the Sussex and Warren County side more so, we determined that we need to conduct outreach to the farms, get our ducks more in a row, as Hutter and RE has the foundation with the 579 Trail. So for Sussex, I myself am taking on the role in the absence of our Planning Director Autumn in communicating with farms about this initiative. Ron, you can help too if you'd like, but I want to get all, I know you got your hands full. This criteria aligned, for the most part, with the Four Seasons of Agricultural, so I'm just going to contact those entities first and move on from, you know, any interested entities from there. Last but not least, aside from SCCC and agriculture, I did attend last night the Sussex County Historical Society meeting. I wanted to make sure to announce that Sussex County History Day will be on Saturday, September 21st, from 11:00 to 4:00 at the Academy Green. The event will include live music, food games, vendors, education, and more. Parking will be available at the old McGuire Lot where the Culinary Institute is right over there. For more information or to obtain tickets, please reach out to the one and only Mario Poggi at SussexHistoryNJ@gmail.com. That's all.
Deputy Director Carney?
All right. Sussex County DPW Emergency Storm Cleanup. Obviously, we've been getting hit with a lot of storms, a little microburst here and there. So DPW crews were activated early evening on Tuesday, July 16th, in response to extensive storm damage in the north part of the county. DPW crews worked well into the night to establish road closures and detours due to numerous downed trees. Many of the trees were entangled with high voltage lines, complicating the response. Obviously, JCPN, L, some of you guys were out of power for a couple of days. They were working along with our DPW. Hardest area hit was Frankfurt, Wantage, and Vernon. The storm resulted in an extended closure of seven segments of the county roots. Storm cleanup became the top priority for DPW through Thursday, July 18th. All county roads were open late Thursday afternoon. Kudos to the DPW for their quick response and engineering as well. This is from the county clerk's office, in his words, not mine, his words. Enclosed, please find the June revenue report. The June 2024 report indicates a revenue reduction in the amount of $37,777.25 from June 2023. It is important to note income from the county clerk's office through June 30th, 24, totals The June figure is important because revenue generated as of June 30th, 2024 meets a projected cash flow goal per the operational budget submitted to the Sussex County Commissioners during the 23 budget hearings for fiscal year 24. The report also indicates revenue from '23 to '24 is up $155,730.88. Property Alert System in June went up 55, and to date is 1,114. Daniel's Law, the June was 20, and to date, 606. What?
They're not working.
Saturday, I attended with Commissioner Space and Senator Space, along with some others. We had, there was a food drive at the Carriage House in Clover Lake, raising money for the food pantry, Sussex County Food Pantry. Hit a little weather, but I think they did okay. I'm not sure what the numbers look like, but it's always nice to get money donated to the food pantry. And last night, I attended with District 24 and again with Director Space. Micro-surfacing that they're doing in Anover on Route 206, right around Simon Peter, I think they were doing 13 miles, something like that, right, Bill? 13 miles, all said and done? Yeah, right, right, for this stage. Yeah, I think 32 miles altogether, that's what it was, 32 altogether. Long story short, what micro-surfacing is, is basically instead of milling and paving, when they rip up the pavement, put it back down, they just skim a 3/8 layer with this small material, and it looks brand new, and it helps our roads for about five or six years. We attended that last night around 8:00. Congratulations, the girls are gone, but I feel like they're always getting awards and proclamations, so again, kudos to them for being as young as they are and helping out the food pantries and people throughout the community. Hopefully, one day, they're up here at this dais, doing the same thing for the rest of the county in different opportunities. I want to apologize to Sparta, though. You guys came out thinking that you were going to be able to talk about 14A, and that sucks, so apologize for that. That's all.
Thank you. You can always speak your comments during our public comment session, which will be coming up soon. I attended last week the Sussex Tech School Board meeting. We are still looking for one more Board of Ed member. If you know someone that would like to apply, they can send their resume to cmarks@sussex nj.us, and we will look over them. Sussex Tech enrollment, they gave us the numbers. Their enrollment numbers are looking pretty good. They're anticipating 766 students. I'll pass these out to my colleagues so that they can see the status. Anticipated enrollment is 766 students, ninth grade, 200 students, 10th grade, 201, 11th grade, 198, and 12th grade, 167. They had 26 kids apply that declined enrollment, and then they had two kids that went from full-time back to shared time, and eight kids that went from shared time to full-time, and then 10 kids that returned back to district. And they do, they were going to post this on Sussex Tech's website if you wanted to see their numbers. And I attended the Wantage Township Committee meeting as a wanted resident, and it's been a little heated there because their ambulance squad is going from volunteer to paid Monday through Friday days, and not everyone is very happy about that. And I attended the Board of Elections meeting last week, and I'm the liaison, and I know that I can speak on behalf of this board, that we are committed to making sure that election integrity is protected in Sussex County. We do have them on our executive session. I went to ribbon cutting for a new hair salon in Newton, in a hair studio with Commissioner DeGroot and Commissioner Carney, and my health department report is on my phone, so I forgot to print it out. New Jersey State Fair, Sussex County Fairgrounds, Augusta, New Jersey, Friday, August 2nd through Saturday, August 10th. The Division of Health, Senior Services, Social Services, Community and Youth Services, and the Office of Transit will be represented in the Sussex County Building at New Jersey State Fair. Both displays and special events will be provided to benefit Sussex County residents. Behind the scenes, environmental health staff will be completing the important task of inspecting and approving all food vendors at the fair to ensure the health and safety of the public. Medical reserve recruitment will be available in the county building on August 3rd from 12:00 to 3:00 PM, and on August 5th through August 9th from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. Public health nursing will be providing free blood pressure screenings in the county building on August 5th through August 9th from 12:00 to 3:00 PM. Skylands Ride will be providing transportation to the fair. Individuals in need can call 973-579-0480. Senior Day at the Fair will be held on Thursday, August 8th, 2024, from 12:00 to 3:00 PM, under the Planet Network's Performing Arts Tent at the fairgrounds. Seniors will enjoy visiting numerous vendors to obtain important information about services while enjoying refreshments, store prizes, and listening to rock and roll music from the '60s, '70s, and beyond. Staff from the Divisions of Health, Social Services, Community and Youth Services, and the Office of Transit will be on site to answer questions and provide valuable information and resources to seniors. The Sussex County Senior of the Year presentation will take place at 1:00 PM, which recognizes seniors in Sussex County who have been nominated for their accomplishments and outstanding service to their community. Sussex County Skylands Ride bus drivers will also be recognized for their years of safe driving. Children's Day will take place on Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, from 12:00 to 3:00 PM, under the Planet Network's Performing Arts Tent. Division of Health, the Office of Public Health Nursing will promote its services and resources and provide children with educational activities about nutrition. Clean Communities Program will staff a table and host activities for children. Division of Community and Youth Services, the Division of Community and Youth Services will host a table at Children's Day with crafts and activities to promote social and emotional learning. Staff will provide parents and guardians with information about programs and services. That's all I have. Okay. Number 10, approval of consent agenda, there is none. Number 11, approval of the regular meeting minutes of July 10th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Schick, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Number 12, there are no ordinances. Number 13, there are no appointments under resignations. Number 14, we have 14A through?
U.
A through D, and then F through U.
We've taken out.
Oh, A through, A through D.
And then F.
Okay. Okay. A through D, and then F through U. Can we get a motion to adopt the resolutions A through D and F through U?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner Hayden?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Number 15, awards of contract change orders bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through C?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner DeGroot and Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Number 16, financials. Can I get a motion to pay the bills list for July 24th, 2024?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Schick, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Abstain.
Number 17, personnel, Ron is going to discuss that, and new business. And number 18, administrative report.
Oh, sorry. I was jumping to the end there. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, just for everybody, ask that the public give us a little time in the front here. We're redoing all the steps and stuff out there. We're making that more safe and not just for the aesthetics of it, to make it more safe to walk through and all that, so apologize for the mess out there. And then lastly, I don't know if you've noticed, we've got microphones sticking up here, we've got new speakers. They started the installation of the whole new AV system in here this week. They were supposed to start tomorrow, but because we had a meeting tonight, so we had to get them out of here real quick. But by the 21st meeting, you shall see this thing fully implemented with a brand-new AV, camera, video, audio. My goal is to have the people in the back someday say, hey, can you turn it down? So you don't have to worry about hearing us, so it's anymore. So that's coming down the line, and that's really all I have. Thank you.
Number 19, county council report.
Nothing for the regular session. We do have a couple litigation matters to review, or potential litigation matters to review, and executive, one of which will likely require us to come back out when we're done, but that's it.
Number 20, unfinished business?
I have some unfinished business. I guess it's unfinished. Could be new. We'll call it unfinished because we spoke about this last meeting. A new tech member, I know you just brought that up for Sussex Tech. So I think Commissioner DeGroot said that he had somebody, and I think maybe somebody else did, but no one's put their application in, but one woman, I'll leave her name out of it, I guess, because it doesn't really matter. Did everybody look at that? Did anybody see, look?
Yes.
Looked her over?
Yeah, looked her over, and then I also, just a comment, if I'm allowed to?
Absolutely.
Okay. I did, like, tell my person, hey, you got to go.
Yeah.
You know, you didn't receive anything?
No, I didn't.
And, and, listen, Jack, that, that happens, that's normal.
Yeah, I'm telling, I'm telling.
And here's, here's the problem that I have. You know, these boards need people, you know, to create forums, to have equal voting. You know, you have three Dems, you have three Republicans. So, long story short, is everybody, if everybody saw this information on this woman, I am going to move that we put her on the board as of tonight. So, if I can get a second, or if you want to do that for me, Jill?
If you want me to put the motion out, I would like, then I'll have discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh...
There's a motion, is there a second?
If there's a motion, is there a second? Okay, to put the person's name out there, or I would probably rather say why? She registered to be a, it's, it's...
Well, well, I mean, you don't have to talk about it until we get a second. We don't have a second, we have nothing to talk about.
Well, we're making a motion to...
I made the motion, I just need a second.
Okay. Any, uh, okay, so Deputy Director Carney's making a motion to put a name on the board for consideration tonight. Does anyone want a second? Anything else on unfinished business? Okay, number 21, new business, any new business?
Uh, we, uh, just going back to the personnel of, of agenda? Um, this is, um, two, two things that we were doing. We made all the promotions in the budget that were in June, and because of civil service, people that are in titles, um, their, their time to be put into the next position is not exactly aligned with our budget. It's, it's aligned more in the, in the timing within civil service that they're ready to go to. So, the two that are on this, on this agenda tonight are people that will be eligible in August and September, but we want to do them now so that, because we only have one minute meeting in August, we, they will be ready to go by then. That's the reason that they're on here tonight. That's it.
Okay, sounds good. Number 20, number 22, public session? We, we would need a motion then to consider it.
To approve the personnel agenda.
Can we get a motion to approve the personnel agenda? I'll make the motion, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Do you want all in favor, or we'll do a roll call?
Roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGru?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, number 22, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comments?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGru, seconds, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, motion carries. The floor is open.
Hi, dear everyone, Gail, just late in New Jersey. I'm here for two reasons tonight. I'm looking on my email because I've been asked to read something. So, we'll start with the fact that last time I was here, two weeks ago, I said that there was still, uh, election signs up in Sussex. There's five election signs for Kowick and Russer. Uh, Mr. Schick was nice enough to remove the one that I called his attention to that was in Lafayette. But is there any kind of fine for anyone who leaves the sign up so long after an election? Is there anything on the books that won't be enforced?
Is that right?
We should put something on the books. How about I make a motion that he puts something on the books?
I don't think we can enforce on roads that are not roads.
I see. So, where would you tell them to, if I were to do something like this?
What probably call you left?
The state has one mandate on how we handle them. I was a part of that years ago when we set it up. I don't know if we have anything at the county. I mean, generally, our people, the state people, would pick them up, put them by a dumpster, and they have 30 days to pick them up.
Well, the people who put the sign down?
They should.
The ones who should be picking them up, not people that were paying, that, that's not how it's...
Can I ask where they, where they are, Gail, just out of curiosity?
Ahead in 565, there's five for COVID. There's one in Hampton by Fair of Flight Fuel. In fact, that was, um, somebody had put a loser on top of that, but somehow that sign of loser...
If you could just write it down, I'll go get them.
Okay, I'll take them off, I don't know how that happened. Anyway, that's number one. Number two, I got something to read that's on behalf of the GOP, Barbara Holst, excuse me, Jo Laborbera and Barbara Holstein, and it says, "The Sussex County GOP public statement. The Sussex County GOP announces its decision to move forward with the gathering of signatures to initiate a recall of Commissioner Hayden."
One minute.
"This action comes in response to a serious, serious allegation of stolen valor associated with Commissioner Hayden, which have led to significant loss of trust, confidence within our party and the broader community. The integrity and honor of our elected officials are paramount, and we believe this recall effort is necessary to uphold these values. We thank the community for their support and encourage all concerned citizens to, to participate in this important process. Recall will kick off Friday, July 26th, 5 to 7, at the, uh, Green there in Newton. You can check out the Facebook page for Committee to Recall William Bill Hayden." So, that starts on Friday. Okay, thank you.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. I just want to start off with saying, I'm not a crank, I have better things to do with my life, trust me. I'm not, obviously not a lone wolf because other things are happening now. And I, of course, would call for resignation again, but since, obviously, Commissioner Hayden is not a big enough man and just, and does not have the courage to be the kind of clean...
Ma'am, ma'am, let's not make personal attacks, make your statement.
Excuse me?
You don't need to make personal attacks, but you can make your statement. It's not a question of being a big enough man or woman, but go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have trouble hearing.
You can make your statement and still be polite, go ahead.
"The process to distribute recall petitions will begin, as she just said, Friday night on the Newton Green, and I would encourage everyone to attend and sign a recall petition. If you are unable to attend, I'm sure there will be many other opportunities upcoming in various locations to sign. And Commissioner Hayden, if, um, you continue to think this is a joke, and it's very funny, well, it's really, I feel it's a horrendous issue, but I assure you, your behavior will only encourage more people of Sussex County to sign the recall petition. Once again, I, I urge people to show up there or, or other places to sign a recall petition. Thank you."
So, you're coming at me for something I never ran on, which is fine, but there's inconsistencies here. Gail's friend, an elected official, told somebody to lie on a medical report. How come we're not going after her? She was an elected official, which told her to lie. So, yeah, I'm going to laugh, because there are very, there are a lot of inconsistencies. I could point out inconsistencies all day long. I'm not going to do that, I don't have the time. Keep coming at me, I'm just, it's a waste of time, that's it.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
So moved, second.
Uh, Commissioner DeGru and Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Number 23, reminders, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. And we also have our next meeting is a different pattern, so it's Wednesday, August 21st, and that is our only meeting. Number 24, executive session, Christine.
Resolution regarding providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12 et cetera, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated below. Number seven, matters relating to litigation negotiations and the attorney-client privilege, Board of Elections and litigation. Be it further resolved that deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public. And be it further resolved that the Board expects to take formal action after returning from executive session and to adjourn the regular, regular meeting."
Can I get a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Can we get a motion to adjourn from executive session and return to regular business?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Hayden and Commissioner DeGru, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. And then we have to vote on... Two resolutions.
Two resolutions.
Two resolutions. Okay, we need to vote on the Clem settlement. Um, can I get a motion to vote on the Clem settle, settlement, to accept it?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a second? I'll second. Okay, roll call. Uh, Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGru?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And then I need a motion on...
What's the name, what was it? Software House, to approve the Software House.
A motion to approve the Soft, Software House resolution.
So, so...
Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second with Commissioner DeGru, any discussion?
Yeah, just so the record's clear, when we went into executive, it became clear that there was a contract item that would, that still had to be discussed. That was a topic, that was an appropriate topic for executive session. Discussions, which is why we've come out tonight, that's the second resolution. Um, so, uh, that's the context in which it was discussed and why you have to deal with it tonight.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGru?
Yes.
Uh, Director Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Commissioner DeGru, and a second from Commissioner Hayden, all in favor?
Aye.
Under an hour, you go with executive session. Not bad.
6:54.